A lot of people and...
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment in silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, let me do the proclamation first. How's that sound? Dana, come on up. Right at the podium.
And which would be the best way for her to be seen on the video, right here?
Yep, right there is fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go slow, my style. Whereas at least forty-six million people need help, have a hearing with a communication disorder. Communication is key in many aspects of life, at school, work, healthcare settings, during social and leisure activities. And whereas at work, an individual's safety may depend on his or her ability to hear potential dangers in the environment. And his or her productivity may rely on the ability to clearly communicate plans, progress, and concerns with coworkers and supervisors. And whereas speech and language disorders are one of the most common conditions that young children experience. Whereas Quota Club of Suland is a nonprofit organization that empowers adults, children, the deaf, hard of hearing, and individuals with speech difficulties. Quota Club provides materials for educators to teach sign language to the classmates of hearing impaired children so that they can better communicate with each other and they support the deaf community by providing a special collection of books about sensitivity toward hearing impaired individuals, disabilities, and bullying. Now therefore, I, Rockery Scott, Mayor of the city of Susie Isle, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Better Hearing and Speech Month. In Susie Isle, and urge all our citizens to work together to ensure that those with speech, language, and hearing disorders have access to quality services and remind everyone to take care of their hearing and get tested if they are stressed. Send that to you.
Thank you.
Say a few words if you'd like.
Sure. The Quota Club is grateful to the city for this proclamation to help raise awareness of speech and hearing impaired individuals. This is Sandy Leach with the AEA, and she's been instrumental in facilitating programs with Quota for the speech and hearing impaired students of Suland. This year, students, interpreters, deaf educators, teachers, and audiologists will be presented with this T-shirt that we're both wearing, purchased by Quota to wear during this month. Quota has also purchased a special collection of books about sensitivity towards hearing impaired individuals, bullying, disabilities, and other special needs that can be distributed to students and used as resources for interpreters and teachers to share. These books often generate discussion among teachers and students that can be, can result in increased awareness and sensitivity towards students who are hearing impaired. Quota also supplied items for the launch pad to start a quarterly sensory-friendly night for children with special needs. Some of the items that they have found for children with special needs are sensory circles, texture memory games, and a sensory buckle pillow. This event will be completely free for families who have children with special needs and their immediate families. Previously, over a hundred students participated in our sign language class to teach them to communicate with deaf children, their deaf classmates, using books provided by Quota. In lieu of face-to-face sign language classes this year, we purchased ASL computer program memberships for families of our Suland deaf students. We hope to go back to in-person classes next year. Thank you again for this proclamation of Better Speech and Hearing Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Kevin, give us our two-week update.
Thank you. Kevin Greem, Suland District Health Department. Right now, just kind of what the numbers are showing is that as far as fully vaccinated, if you look at, according to the total population of Woodbury County, we're at thirty-three percent, but when you look at the eligible population, the sixteen and older, that goes up to forty-three percent. So we are making progress. We have about forty, I think there's forty-seven hundred that have received their first dose on slate to get their second dose. So we want to continue, individuals and residents, to continue to seek out the vaccine. We have finished up with the broad-based mask clinics, but we have vaccine all over the community, pharmacies, physicians, about anywhere, we're actually offering appointments through the health department. We just want to make sure that if people make the decision to get the vaccine in the matter of a phone call or a quick online experience, they can be signed up for an appointment and be able to go in and get that. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, the restriction on that was lifted, that is beginning. We're working through some of the pharmacies to distribute that one dose. So it's one dose, one shot, that moves through much more quickly to improve the rates. Today's, you know, the numbers, case counts, we've been thankful, we've had about three consecutive days in the single digits, actually less than five. So our cases are really down as far as that, but as, and the testing is somewhat, staying somewhat consistent. So we're fairly comfortable with that. We're just kind of looking at continuing, hopefully finishing out the school year without any issues arising, and then we'll see what summer brings. But so far, things look much better. When you look at about a year ago now, we were actually around the tenth of May, we were just in that cusp, I think we had some of the highest case counts on a daily basis. And so it's made a, twelve months has made a big world of difference. So, like we said, we're out there just promoting the vaccine and we're looking at doing to some community events, community health centers out there doing some pop-up clinics, but just becoming available and aware and where people are at. So that's kind of the strategy and the plans for right now.
And what's the phone number if people want to call and get an appointment?
For us, it's two-seven-nine-six-one-one-nine.
Two-seven-nine-six-one-one-nine. Thank you, Kevin.
You bet. Thank you.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Yes.
I just want to thank you again. I'm really proud of the way the city worked in cooperation with your team at both Long Lines and at Expo Center. It was extremely well-run on the mass, what'd you call it, mass?
Mass clinics.
Clinics.
Yep.
Extremely well. And I just wanted, I'm proud of the way the city rose to the occasion to work with you closely and made it as easy as possible. So thank you for that.
Both facilities were excellent hosts. We appreciated working with them, and we have no complaints on that aspect. So we appreciate everything they did for us. It was great.
Thank you. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll go to the consent agenda today, which is items two through twelve D, considering them to pass unanimously. Unless a council member asks for a vote. If you ever want to speak on an item, please come up as I read that number and state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, two is a reading of the city councilments of May third. Three is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions on April twenty-seventh. Four is a resolution assessing a five-hundred-dollar civil penalty against Princess Tavern for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. Five are a resolution adopting specifications for the demolition of fifteen eighteen, fifteen twenty-two Douglas Street. Six is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to mark out initiatives for the West Seventeenth Street water main replacement project. B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Bert Gurney and Associates for the pump repair project. C is a resolution approving the contract to Iowa Plain signing for the street pavement, painting, and striping project. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Kirk &amp; Michaels for the replod of Highland Park project. Mayor, I have a couple of comments and questions to make on this item, but Jeff, you have some remarks you're going to make.
Sure. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. This project here, we started during the capital improvement program development phase earlier this year. We were asked by the council to proceed forward with conducting a auditor's plat or replat of the Highland Park area, which is the area immediately north and to the east of the existing Woodbury Heights subdivision. As a result of that, we had been working with Kirk &amp; Michael Incorporated out of Lincoln, Nebraska, who has done work in this area and has experience conducting survey work in this subdivision. We reached out to them, and they had shown interest in completing the project. As part of this process, we also solicited two other bids from two local surveying groups, and both of those local surveying groups declined to provide a bid to perform the work. As of this morning, we were contacted by the local DGR engineering firm who saw the agenda item on today's agenda and has shown interest in submitting a bid and has submitted a bid on this project as of this morning. And so I will leave that up to council. I believe we have a representative here from DGR in the audience, and then also we should have a representative from Kirk &amp; Michael showing up soon. He mentioned he may be a few minutes late, he's on the road, and hit some road construction. So I will answer any questions that you may have. The contract with Kirk &amp; Michael is ninety-five thousand dollars, which is on today's agenda. I can share with you that the bid that came in from DGR about mid-morning today is lower than that ninety-five thousand dollar amount.
What was the deadline for bids?
We solicited bids month and a half ago.
Solicited proposals, which doesn't require...
Correct.
Okay, proposal, RFP, gotcha.
Well, I can wait till we get the input from everybody. Is there somebody, DGR here?
Brian Wells is out in the lobby.
Daryl, will you see if somebody from Kirk &amp; Michaels is here too? Ryan, you want to talk about this subject? Go ahead.
Brian Wells with DGR Engineering, sixty-one fifteen Whispering Creek Drive. Yeah, we just became familiar with this project this morning, so real fresh in our office. We just understood that there's quite a bit of surveying work, which our licensed surveyor, Dave Lamerton, has been with our firm for thirty years and done work in the area, and more unable to, to do the work as inquired or requested. So we put some hours to it this morning and, and sent an email to Jeff for consideration, which is why I'm here today.
Well, I got a question. I mean, it's easy to be low bid when you know what the other guy's bid is. That, that's bothersome to me, number one. Number two, how did you even know the scope of the work?
Well, I talked to Jeff about that this morning, and there was a scope in the, in the council packet. So yeah, that's, I had no control over that. That's all right there. So we, we estimated hours and, based on tasks, and you can see the differences with, with our hours and fees versus the competitor. So, you know, we're, our expenses are lower because we're right here, our mileage is lower. Certainly, it's a difficult area, seventy-five acres of, of difficult terrain and area that's going to take some, some fieldwork, certainly. So we understand that there's going to be a lot of public involvement, property owner involvement, research, all of which, you know, we have the people to do that. We have two licensed land surveyors in our office and three field technicians. And this is the work that we do.
Jeff, what's the, what was the process that you followed for the RFPs?
We've been working with Kirk &amp; Michael, I would say, for the last six to seven months as they were involved with other survey work that was occurring in the area. They're the ones who originally submitted a proposal to us with a estimate to complete the work. As part of that, as we were preparing the agreement to move forward with them, working with legal staff, we were directed to go and solicit two other bids, so we had three total bids to complete the work. And we verbally sought those bids through, and I can name the two, I believe it's in the RCA. If it's not, we solicited bids from L. Fagan with Fagan Surveying, and Doug Morthorse with MLS Surveying, and both of those firms chose not to submit. We did not reach out to any other firms.
Well, in defense of Kirk &amp; Michaels, they have a long history out there. They were there thirty years ago when we started this process. Thirty years ago, this should have been done. Mr. Moore dropped the ball when he was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we'll let that go. So it should have been done, and they, they're the ones that have the history out in that neighborhood. This is not an easy project by any stretch of anybody's imagination. You're going to have to deal with homeowners who don't want to give up property that are somehow going to have to. It's not going to be easy, so. But, go ahead, Mr. Moore. Well, those were going to be some of my comments, and Brian, I, it's unfortunate that you weren't contacted. I will say that it was thirty years ago, Mayor, and I think the Planning and Zoning Commission had an estimate of twenty-five thousand dollars to do the, the replating or the auditor's plat. But you're exactly right. This is, my comments I wanted to make is, is we've been looking at this Highland Park addition, and Mr. Ryan Ross is here, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he's well aware that we've been looking at this for a number of years where it truly is a hindrance for property owners to refinance or to even get financing to sell their homes or to sell their properties. It's, it's a terrible hindrance, and it has been for years. And even contract sales, lawyers who do real estate work are very hesitant to advise a buyer to buy on contract because you can't identify where the property is, or even worse, your, your property is sitting out in the street somewhere, or you have other houses. I, I mean, the lots don't even match up. And the point I wanted to make is this, this attend up to ten public meetings, I, that might not be enough. I mean, you're exactly right. This is a monumental task that's long overdue. We've talked about it and talked about it. The mayor and the city council have finally put it in the budget to get something done for, for those property owners. And, and I think these public meetings are going to be critical to the success of the, of the survey and work to be done. We tried to survey it about thirty years ago, and it didn't work for that very reason, Mayor. The, the property owners were just objected and said, "We like it the way it is, we're going to keep it this way." But it continues to be a hindrance, and, and you have lawyers like Mr. Ross that find a creative way to make something work, but, you know, it's kind of temporary, isn't it, Ryan? You know, to, to get that done, and it, it just needs to be done right, so. And I would tell the council, if you're going to vote for this, be prepared, because it's not going to be easy. Well, and that's why the public meetings are going to be so critical. I, everyone really needs to cooperate. Not, no matter what happens, somebody's going to be upset on this. There's no question about it. But better to have one or two people unfortunately be upset, and the rest of the people out there get title to their property, than they have this hodgepodge that we have out here right now. You know, and we've allowed houses to be built out there in that thirty years. That's the problem. That's right. That's exactly right. So I don't have an answer for you, Brian. I couldn't get anybody to ever go out there and survey just an individual property, but that's, that's a little different to do the individual properties, because you don't, you don't have the perimeter survey done, and you don't, you don't have your lot set, and, and the city attorney's office knows how difficult this project's going to be going forward, but it's a real true service to the property owners at Highland Park. It, it truly is. I'm, I'm happy the city is going forward with this. I wish the misstep, if you want to call it that, would not have been made, but I'm just hoping it will be successful. And like I said, I think every property owner is going to need to cooperate with the process. And I'm, I guess that's a plea now, just to give them a heads up. You know, please, please, at least be open-minded and listen to the proposals that are being made for the replating of Highland Park, and we can get some really good things done in the long run. Well, you didn't give back ten million dollars like other council members did, so we'll forgive you for this little... Well, thank you. What's the council want to do?
I, I think that I agree with your point, Mayor, in the beginning. I mean, I don't fully understand the process yet. I guess you get to select the people. And it wasn't publicly printed or made known. But boy, I sure, I don't know how you, once you got a price on the table, how do you, how does it become a fair process? And I've I've seen enough of these in the seven years that there's always amendments, these original, and it... I think we need to do the project. And maybe the process needs to be better defined in the future. I, I just don't know how it becomes fair when you know what you're bidding against already. That's the bad part. I feel terrible that you weren't given the opportunity, but...
I can't, yeah, I can't control the numbers being out there.
I know you can't, Ryan, and I...
I can just give you my best number.
I wish that we, and I'm sure we'll learn from it, but...
Well, Pete, to, to a comment you made, and I'm hoping we'll remember this, but Jeff did a good job of getting a thorough look at this, what the work is going to be.
No, I, I don't disagree.
And to come back with a change, you're talking about maybe potential change orders. I would not anticipate change orders on a project
On this at all?
of this nature. Would you? Am I wrong about that? I, I sure would not expect any. And Ryan Ross, I'd like to have you maybe weigh in on that. I wouldn't expect any, though.
Stephen Pastalka, City Legal Law. I don't want to see change orders on any project, obviously, that we set up, and I, I don't anticipate them here. This is going to be an unpredictable project, obviously, but we've tried to build that into the plan to the degree possible. And frankly, and with, with all due respect to DGR, we, we were sort of surprised to get anybody to touch this, you know? It was really a thing. I know in, in our talks with Kirk &amp; Michael, they had done auditor's plats of this nature before, but nothing on this scale. And frankly, I'm not sure anybody has in the Midwest, anyway. It's, it's truly a massive project.
Dana, I would note, and it's not included in the scope of services with Kirk &amp; Michael, but there is title work that we will need to handle locally on our own that we'll need to submit for the project as well. But we've informed Kirk &amp; Michael that that's not part of their, their scope or their bid, and so we're working with our local firms to do that title opinion work.
And the only thing I could add is that Kirk &amp; Michael is, is more familiar with the words of this project and the, and the difficulties of it. Just because it had, and again, they have had more opportunity to participate in it, and they seem to be very aware of the complications when they came up with their bids, so there's some benefit to going forward, you know, with those folks, given the fact that they are educated already on...
Did you hear the earlier discussion? Come on up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Chad Marsh, one-two-seven-zero-zero, West Dodge Road, Omaha. With Kirk &amp; Michael.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I, well, just from what I caught up on, you know, we've been working with the city on this for nine months, you know, to get something together. We're familiar with the area. We did the Woodbury Heights plating up there years ago. We're familiar with the problems that are in the area between landowners, as well as, you know, the obvious title problems that are going to be with the, every, most of the properties in that quadrant. So we would be greatly disappointed if this contract did not go through, because we were actually ready to go to work here this week, so. We've been prepping for it for several months, so. The fact that somebody else came on board now and says they want to do it, I'm not sure, and maybe you discussed this already, but how would the council look at moving forward at this point if you wanted to get another bid, since they already know what our bid is? It's not really competitive.
Yes, that was brought up.
What do you want to do, council?
I think we should move forward.
Yeah, I normally would go low bid, but it's, I want somebody that's got some history out there. I, I really think that's kind of important on this project, but I'll go either way. I don't care. I just want to get it done. Thirty years is long enough. Seeing no motion, we'll go to...
Did we, were we told what DGR's bid was, or that's not public, or?
No, ninety thousand.
Oh, ninety it was?
Kirk &amp; Michaels is ninety-five.
Yep. I didn't hear the ninety. Yeah, I'm fine with them moving ahead, too.
Well, and you probably weren't in here when I was saying earlier, I mean, I mean, you're well aware, Mr. Wells is well aware of what the challenges are in this project.
Oh, yes. You don't have to spend long, long looking at these GIS mapping up there to see what the problems are, so.
And, and I wouldn't expect any change orders on this project, because we've, you know, according to what Jeff has said and what the city attorney's office has said, it's a pretty thorough project that's been set out.
Yeah.
So I hope you, I hope you would agree with that, and if Mr. Wells...
Unless there's something unforeseen out there that we don't know about, but right now, I feel pretty good we're wrapped.
Well, you saw the aerial map, I would assume. I think, Brian, you probably have seen the aerial map of Highland Park, and, and you can see why there are issues out there that we can address as a city. And, and in the long run, I mean, the overall picture, it's going to provide many, many lots to build on. It will be buildable, they can get financing on it, and that's going to help us with our affordable housing that we so desperately need in this community. I mean, there are going to be a lot of good things that come out of it if we get it done right, and we have the cooperation of all the property owners.
I would, I would think the, the property owners, the majority of them would want it cleaned up, and not at their expense, honestly, so. You know, if I owned a house and it wasn't, was sitting in the street right away, I'd be a little concerned about it moving forward. Whether I want to sell it myself or it was going into my estate someday, so.
Right. Okay, we'll move on. Fibercom number E.
Thank you.
Resolution granting, resolution granting a permit to Fibercom to maintain underground cable near one-zero-zero, one-thousand, thousand-eight Douglas Street. Two is a resolution granting a permit to Fibercom to maintain underground cable near one-oh-three South Fairmont Street. Eight are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell property abutting five-oh-six West Fourteenth Street, petitioner is Alan Starr. B is a resolution proposing to sell property near five-oh-eight West Fourteenth Street, petitioner is Margaret Satori. C is a resolution proposing to sell property at fifteen-twenty-eight and a half, Harris Street, the petitioner is Jimmy Ann Kimberly Rising. Nine are appointments to boards and commissions and committees. A is a motion appointing Dr. Cindy Hansen to the Civil Service Commission. B is a resolution appointing Ricky Mock to the Effective Fiscal and Public Policy Committee. B is a resolution appointing Ricky Mock to the Effective Fiscal and Public Policy Committee. C is a motion appointing Brandon Bosch to the Environmental Advisory Board. The city council waives the policy that members must be resident electors, property owners, or business owners in Sioux City. D is a motion appointing Bradley Gregorich to the Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. E is a motion appointing Brad, Brent Belding to the Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. F, motion pointing Randy Eylers to the Senior Advisory Committee. G is a motion appointing Joe Simons to the Yamuna Sister City. Ten are applications for liquor, for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list come forth if you have any questions. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forth if you have any questions. Twelve are receipt of minutes. See the list come forth if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Mr. Waters is absent today. Recommendations of Planning and Zoning. Thirteen is a hearing and ordinance amending chapters, various chapters of municipal code under the Title 25 zoning and sign code. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Second. Public hearing is now open.
Good afternoon. Council Ryan Ross, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's quite a few changes that are contemplated here in the agenda item. The council, the commission did approve this five zero. Many of these items are cleanup from ordinance rewrite of several years ago. There are a couple substantive matters, but there was no public comment, and no one came forward to express any concerns about the ordinance changes.
I understand a lot of cleanup, but there is some different things here than I, you know, I'm, we spent a lot of money to get that done, and now here, two years later, we're making changes to it. Why, do you think?
Well, some of these are, I wouldn't say directly related to the ordinance rewrite. Some of them, for instance, the one I noted was a liquor store item, was a change that, to me, made common sense, nothing to rewrite. Simply allowing a liquor store to be on a arterial street makes our process simplified over the way it was before, which required distance limitations from schools and other things. So I don't think that's related to the, to the ordinance rewrite.
Okay. Anyone to be heard? Brian, I have some questions on some of these provisions, and first one is the one you just mentioned, that, and what I'm looking at, it's probably the same as what is in the council packet, but I'm looking at P&amp;Z list, so it'd be the one, two, three. The third one down, amend section 25.02.180 on the liquor sales, alcohol sales, the one you were just talking about. So it's the third one, I think it's the third one down, it's 25.02.180.
Right.
So was that, so that, so if it's on, if there is a sale of alcohol on an arterial street, then the distance does not matter as to whether it's a church or school, or does that distance requirement go away?
That's my understanding, and that's the one that, the one item on the, of all of these changes that I brought up for discussion, because I felt like it was a material change. The discussion at planning and zoning was that this would affect very, a very, very limited number of locations, and that they felt like this would actually be somewhat more restrictive than the prior ordinance.
Is that accurate?
Chris Madsen, Senior Planner, there is a number of standards that that would have to meet, and staff could approve alcohol sales for consumption off-premise. If those standards can't be met, that's where a conditional use permit would be applied for through the Board of Adjustment. So those are the rules we changed, is for the conditional use permit. So no longer would it be allowed on a collector's street, it would be only on a arterial, so that would limit the number of locations, but then we would remove those setback standards that are in there from a school or from residential property if it's on the major street. So an example of one that was recently approved by the Board of Adjustment was on Gordon Drive, the Dollar General. That one was, I believe, 148 feet from a residential property, so it did not meet that standard, but was approved, so that's what kind of led to us wanting to change this code requirement.
So then it would be approved under this amended?
It could be approved. Again, it would still have to get the conditional use permit, but it could be approved by the board.
Okay, because there'd probably be some parks that, areas in the city that parks would probably be within that distance, too.
Right, yeah, the idea was on the major streets is where we would want that used to be, so that's why we wanted to increase the requirement by the street classification, but then reduce the setback requirements.
Okay. Do you know if, is it Sulan cares or the Mayor's Youth Commission? Do you know if they had a chance to look at this one, to get their input on it?
Don't believe this change was sent to them.
The what? I'm sorry.
I don't believe this change was sent to them, no.
I know they've been monitoring in the past years that alcohol sales. My next one is on 25.02.280, permitted accessory uses buildings and structures to amend fencing requirements for above-ground pools. I thought, my memory's not as good as it's been, Ryan, in the past, but I thought we had already had that discussion on that item, and I thought we had approved, approved the amendment.
I noticed that, too. Chris, maybe can chime in, but yes, it's consistent with the prior approval that the council given three or four months ago.
The prior change was for in-ground pool. It did not address above-ground, so we wanted to bring the above-ground pool section into conformity with what we changed.
Okay, the prior change was a limit.
That was for the in-ground with the flat auto covers.
Okay, okay. And then sections 25, section 25.03.090.1, accessory buildings and structures to allow accessory structures in the AG, RR, and NC.1 zoning districts in front of the principal building. That's a pretty major change, isn't it?
That's actually a change that we had made in the 1976 ordinance towards the end of its lifespan. I did not come over to the new code, so we're just bringing that back into the 2015 code.
Well, so that's been in effect for a while.
It had been in effect, again, towards the end. We did a text amendment on the 1976 code for close to this rule, obviously the zones are different, it just didn't get brought over.
Okay, all right, so it's consistent with that. Thank you. And then 25.03.4140, single-family duplex twin-home and townhome design standards to include a requirement that one tree be planted per lot for new residential developments. What about the landscaping plan that we have in effect? Why would we have to single out one tree per lot?
This should be for just single-family residential, so currently, we don't have a landscaping requirement for single-family. Commercial, multifamily, industrial has its own sets of standards based on parking lots. This would be just for single-family.
So if I didn't want one tree in my lot, would I have to come to council to get a waiver or a, or something?
Yeah, you have to go through planning and zoning, either during the plating process or during the building permit process.
Brian's giving me that look of, don't you ever try that.
Not sure I'd give a waiver to you.
Thanks.
Obviously, this would be for new development.
Well, I know, but there might, but there might be situations where the lot just doesn't support one tree, maybe. Is that a stretch, Mayor? I'm sorry.
That's a stretch, but.
Only if it doesn't have dirt. You're on a roll, so keep going.
And then, well, I'm getting close to wrapping this up, and then the other comment, I guess I just have one more. The other comment I want to make, since I've been around for a while on planning and zoning in particular, remember when we used to have to fight the sign ordinances, and you've got about six sections in here on signs, and I think they're all positive changes, from what I can tell, but could I just ask you to tell me, of those six sections that have been amended, which one, were any of them at least close to being controversial? You know, the proposal would allow message center signs in the DC and SC zoning districts, directional signs you can have in certain districts. Four-foot high requirement, height requirement would be removed on freestanding promotional signs. Any of those that you anticipate would cause an issue or concern in the community?
No issue between the members of the commission. Whether or not one of these might cause someone in the public to be concerned, I don't know, but I wouldn't anticipate that these changes are such that it's going to cause difficulty for compliance and members of the public.
And the only major change there is adding the mobile sign and wind feather signs to the code, and we did use Sioux Falls and Omaha to, what they had in their code to develop that.
By mobile sign, is that like one of those trucks with that?
One of the trailers, essentially. That's a digital sign, yep. The code just doesn't address it right now.
So now that is going to be included in our sign code?
Correct.
I did have one more, I'm sorry. It's on the space and module standards to require all commercial and industrial developments to include a pedestrian pathway from the public sidewalk to the front entrance of the building. We haven't had that requirement before, huh?
Correct. Currently, we only have the sidewalk requirement and the public right-of-way. That's an item that was actually pushed very strongly by the Active Transportation Committee.
I see that.
So they.
They endorsed it.
They're the ones that actually did the research. They went out to the city of Ames' code and found what they had. We repurposed it slightly to fit our code better, but we did agree that that should be in there, and a lot of businesses are doing that already. The Walgreens are doing, McDonald's are doing it without it being required by code.
Like Fleet Farm or Boz, I was out there this weekend. Menards, they don't have that.
Fleet Farm should have a sidewalk on the north side of their entrance, just because their parking lot was so large. They are really the only ones that have been large enough to require a pedestrian pathway so far, but this change would require for any commercial development.
So where do you put it at? I mean, if you put it way to the north, like at Fleet Farm where nobody parks, what did you accomplish?
Pull up the.
Everybody walks down a parking lot to get to the front door.
You mean there would be a sidewalk going through the parking lot? That's not what you're saying, is it, Ryan?
They're basically saying you got to have a sidewalk somewhere to get to the front door.
I think that, yeah, the sidewalk is created through marking, isn't it, Chris? It's not a separately designed raised sidewalk.
Markings, that's one thing, but if it's an actual separate sidewalk, that doesn't accomplish anything when you have one of those huge parking lots, other than wasting a lot of space.
Just to show, these are some developments in Ames, again, where we pulled the code from, so we wanted to show what that would be. So in this case, they did add the sidewalk to the existing paving for the parking lot, and then just striped from that point to the front entry, same as the business over here to the plaza. So that's essentially what this code would require. So that connection from the public right-of-way to the sidewalk, and then striped the rest of the way.
So it's really a safety measure.
Correct.
You're not constructing a sidewalk, but you're putting the striping on it from the park, when you're going through the parking lot.
Do you think anybody's going to walk, like, from way over here to get on that sidewalk? I got news for you, so I don't know what you're really accomplishing it.
This is Walgreens at South Lakeport in Morningside, and they do already have those connections made.
Yeah, because they're only about six foot long, I get that, but I don't, whatever, that's fine.
So it can just be striping, it doesn't have to be some new concrete pour.
Right, they do have the sidewalk that gets you to the parking lot, but that would be the extent of the extra paving, and then, yeah, just the striping the rest of the way.
Well, I think overall, your staff did a great job, and commission did a good job of reviewing all, this is a ton of work, and somewhere in here, you had some pictures we really liked, oh, the building placement. Those diagrams really helpful. Those be adopted, those will be in part of the ordinance, be the building placement?
Yeah, everything that was in there would be part of what's adopted.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? Anyone to be heard in the audience? Hearing is closed. I don't, second, third, I want to make sure sign companies, I would, I would encourage you to send that liquor deal to the Youth Commission as well. Fourteen is a resolution approving the final plat of Bluff Heights, second addition petitioners Marvin Nelson. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Second.
The planning and zoning commission did approve this unanimously, four zero one.
This is really a, this is really needed in our community. I appreciate Marlon Nelson working with the city staff to get this to where it needs to be. It was a, it's a good, it's a good plan, it's a good plat, it's for lots, and we sure could use those, could use more buildable lots. So thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Nobody now. We got it.
Keep that innocent look, don't.
I looked up. Passes four zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution adopting the Comprehensive Solid Waste Reduction Plan. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Would anyone want to be heard? Staff first. Do you want to be heard from the staff, or no? I do have a question for you. Sorry, it's just one of those days, I guess. This will be an easy one. On page two of 20, we talk about, well, actually, it's before that, it talks about the city of Sioux City Solid Waste Agency Planning Area. So that's the planning area, and it says members consist of the city of Sioux City. And then there's a distinction that's being made between the city's entire planning area and versus the community. Are those one in the same areas, or am I, did I miss something in this?
Running Goll, Environmental Services Manager, the city of Sioux City and the planning area are exactly the same. We are unique in the state in that we are the only municipality that is its own planning area.
Okay, so on page two of 20, so for example, the activity in table two, the top three were increased residence in the programs, additional drop-off sites, the single stream, and the streamlined communication of questions and/or information. Those were the top three items that needed to be improved on, and then if you look at the activity down below, it's kind of the same thing, but the totals are different. And I think we have four, top four in that category.
Joe Ferris, Evora Consulting.
Good afternoon.
Address is 515 Crescent Drive, Carlisle, Iowa. So I'm with Evora. We did the comprehensive plan update for, for the planning area, and the table that you're looking at is with the, we do two public meetings, this is the second public meeting. The first public meeting was with the Environmental Advisory Board that we did in, I think it was September, that we met with them, and basically it comes up with ideas of, we have a vision casting of when we, what the, they want to see improvements on. So we pitched, they pitched different ideas, and then the voting is done. So some of these are, why there's two different ones is, it's, as Ron alluded to, that there's one commission, or there's one area, the city of Sioux City, compared to when we do several of these other plans, it might be multiple counties, multiple cities that are within the planning area. So this is, as an association comes up with this, so here's how the city is thinking, and then some people might have a different view of, if you're, when you're a community member. So there's multiple members on that advisory committee, so they're, they're thinking of it as, on a committee aspect, and then also as a resident of the, the planning area. So that's why there's two different areas.
Okay, so then on page six of 20, the four, the top four ISWM activities identified, I mean, the one that's been, number one, streamlined communication of questions and/or information, can you expand on that a little bit about what that means and what impact it has, and who has to make the improvements to it?
So basically, during this vision casting, what the whole comprehensive plan update is, is what? is, is what the commission, what the planning area would like to see as a, in regards to solid waste. That could be anywhere from like this, streamlined communication. If you go towards the back of the document, it comes up with a timeframe, one to five-year timeframe. The comprehensive plan is done every five years. So some of these do change depending on what is going on in the planning area. One five-year segment might be a focus on one item, and five years later, it could be a different one. So in regards to the streamlined communication, the advisory commission or board and the individuals that were there thought that information getting out to individuals' residents on what can be recycled, how can it be recycled, that they were wanting to potentially streamline that. So we come up with a timeline of kind of how that might look, and that's on the page eight, and the proposed activity and milestones. So how, kind of work with the city to come up with, you know, some messaging, different things like that. So all this information is compiled and then is submitted to the Iowa DNR and then gets approved from them. So this is just kind of a roadmap, that if the city wanted, the planning area wanted to talk, work on certain areas within solid waste, this is kind of a roadmap for them to kind of achieve some of those goals.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. It helps us. So Ron, it would be, you would measure these then for the next five years?
Yes, we would focus on their implementation, and then depending upon whether that was achieved, or even if it was fallen short of, then it would be reincorporated or reasserted in the new five-year plan.
Okay. And what's the impact if we don't update this every five years?
So this is actually, the comprehensive plan is mandated by the IDNR to update every five years. But the plan itself, the milestones, if those weren't achieved, there's no penalty or anything like that. But this is something that is required by the DNR. Potentially, if the comprehensive plan was not done, they could, the DNR might hold, if you're with the closed landfill, there could be different permits that might be held up, things like that. So this is just part of the permitting process and things like that with the Illinois DNR, or Iowa DNR, sorry about that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I look forward to making some improvements in those areas. I thought it was really a good comprehensive plan that was presented to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone to be heard? Hearing is closed. Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal, sell property abutting thirty-six, thirty-seven Rebecca Street. The petitioner's got, or I'll move that. Second? Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Seventeen's a resolution approving a development agreement with Mar Deb for residential development at Bluffs Heights Edition and Bluff Heights Second Edition. I'll move that. Another good development. Eight residential structures. Estimated value completed project is one point seven million dollars. It's a big deal. Residential infill. Thank you again. Eighteen's a motion, I'm sorry, that, did you put it up? Passes four zero. Eighteen's a motion authorizing city staff to begin negotiations with Hannah, Inc. to formulate a contract for the animal control management services. Somebody'll have to move that one. I'll move it. Second? Anyone to be heard? Should hear from our police department first. Let our police department tell their story first, if you would.
Captain Chris Grove, Support Services, Police Department. Obviously, for years, the city has contracted with Hannah, Inc. for the animal control services. This year, I knew that there was gonna be a, somebody had called, Amanda Johnson called and asked us to meet with me about the animal control contract. I did meet with her prior to any RFP being sent out. We, I tried to answer the process or answer any questions with her about the animal control contract. Obviously, the RFP went out. We received two bids, both from Hannah, Inc., and then the second one from Amanda Johnson. With those two bids, obviously, we reviewed the RFPs, reviewed what was in the bids, and then I set up a panel, which consisted of myself, Captain Marty Riley, retired police chief Doug Young, and finance director Teresa Fitch. Again, we reviewed those. We did interview both Cindy Rarrett, Hannah, Inc., and Amanda Johnson, to get an idea of what their plans were with animal control and moving forward. It was a unanimous decision of the four people on that panel to adopt or to move forward with Hannah, Inc. Hannah's, Inc. bid was slightly higher, but the experience brought forth, the relationship that we have with Hannah, Inc. I reached out to Captain Lisa Clays, which was the previous captain. I've only been in this position since early February. For years, she was in charge of that contract, was not aware of any issues or any problems incurred with Hannah, Inc. Actually, said it was a very good working relationship. So with that experience, and also with their nonprofit, there's a lot of things that are paid out by Hannah, Inc.'s nonprofit, FOTUS, that is, helps with the services that animal control provides, that is not a cost to the city. So again, it was a unanimous decision for us to move forward with Hannah, Inc., thus what we're here for today.
Just a couple of questions. Number one, for the public that's listening, what was just a little difference in the contract? 'Cause little difference to you, obviously, and little difference to me is a significant number.
The overall, I believe, was roughly sixty-four thousand over the three-year contract. Per month was fifty-one thousand per month versus fifty-three thousand per month. Amanda Johnson starts out higher and then actually drops back down. Hannah, Inc. was fifty-three thousand throughout the entire process, throughout that entire three years, each month.
And really, I don't know what you're talking about with the nonprofit. The bottom line is, you have to perform the contract, whether you do it through nonprofit or what, you still, it's gonna cost the city the same amount of money. I mean, what, if, listen, I think they do a great job, but if they're doing something in a nonprofit, it's benefiting that business, that's their business, not mine. All's I, all's I get to vote on today is the price of the contract.
Correct.
So I don't care what people are doing. You're telling me it's gonna cost more if they don't do that? How can that be? You got a bid. I don't understand your logic there, I guess.
There's some concerns that the bid, at the lower-priced bid, we would get the same service that we are currently getting. Some of those questions came out, some of the things that were presented, how do we continue to provide the service that we were providing with inflation and things going up with that current, with that bid? So there were some concerns with that bid.
Does this contract have a bond? Contract have a bond?
There's a performance, affirmative, we, sorry. Yeah, fifty thousand dollar bond. Yes.
Amber Higerty, Assistant City Attorney, yes, there is a performance bond that's part of the contract.
For how much?
Fifty thousand, I believe.
Total.
Correct.
Any questions? Chris, what was some of the criteria that was used to score the bids?
Received, there was a scoring sheet received from purchasing, and it just looked at experience, just the plan. We looked at the two, the two other agencies in Sioux City that work very closely with animal control, being Humane Society and Noah's Hope, both wrote recommendations. They both have interactions with both. They both had strong opinions. It really just, it wasn't, when you look at a business part of it, or how, what we believed to be the experience brought by Hannah, there wasn't any question.
How many years has Hannah had it? The animal control contract?
Thirty-plus years.
How many, Chris?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Thanks. Cindy was employed there before that though, right? For how many years there?
Cindy, she'd be doing the job thirty-seven, I believe.
Thirty-seven? Thanks. But that just means that they get higher point totals, so that means somebody that is inexperienced and younger is never gonna get this contract. So I don't know why we bid it. Again, here we are. We bid this stuff when we know what the answer is. I don't get it. When you automatically give an incumbent extra points, you automatically eliminate any other bidders on a point system. So...
Perhaps in that one category.
What's that?
If it's broken down into categories with business plan, years of experience.
Depends on what the weighting is on that, Julie. I mean, as a criteria, how many points did they get for that?
There were different weights, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the sheet with me, to give you the exact points.
The number difference was significant.
What's that?
The total differences were significant.
Yes. As far as the overall scores, yes.
So price must be a very small portion of it.
We didn't weigh the price of it, we weighed just the part of the...
Okay. I don't know how you do that. Well, which, well, the question I have is, so which category would be the quality of work that's actually delivered to the city? I mean, the services. They're, you know, they're excellent, outstanding, average, below average, whatever that rate is. Is that in that same point category?
It's based on a point system, so some were up to fifteen points, some had up to twenty-five points. There was, I believe, a total of a hundred total points that were available.
Okay. But if, but if you had someone, and I'm not saying they are, this is just an example or a question, so if it's on the other side, instead of fully performing and doing an outstanding job, if they were not performing, so that would be reflected in, you'd give them one, zero, or one point, or two points, whatever it would be?
Correct.
Is that, okay?
True. If there was issues or concerns with somebody, then they would receive a lower score.
Right. Okay.
And there were, I mean, there were a number of things brought up in interviews that we had concerns with. I don't know if this is the right thing to air here.
It is.
There was a number of things that were brought up that I had concerns with, and all four of us had concerns with.
Well, I'm sure Doug Young will be calling me. He likes to call me when I second-guess the committees at the police department, but it's not a fair process. Never has been a fair process, and it's, you know, the rest of council's gonna be supportive, I'm sure, and I have no, again, I have no problem, I have a problem with the process around here. It's weighted for the incumbent in everything we do around here. So a younger person is never gonna have a chance to do business in this and other contracts, so that's my problem. When you automatically give the incumbent a lot of points, because they do provide a good service, it automatic, and you don't, and price doesn't even become part of the criteria, you gotta be the only organization in America that price doesn't at least play a small part in that process. I'm sorry, but price does mean something to the average person on the street that's complaining about their property tax dollars to me every day I go out there.
And I don't think that price doesn't matter. You're right, sixty-four thousand...
Well, then it ought to have some points. It ought to have some points in your criteria. I mean, if it matters, then it ought to have points.
And I'll point out, this wasn't just our criteria, this is a citywide criteria that we received.
And I'm not complaining just about you. I'm making it very clear, I have this problem every time we do one of these. Not something new that I just came up with. Anyone else to be heard? Keep in mind, name and address, then you got three minutes, okay?
Okay. Amanda Johnson, thirty-one eleven Valley Drive. I am the other bidder on this contract. I do agree with a lot of things that Captain Grove's had to say. I do feel like I have a disadvantage, and I would like to request a motion to defer going into negotiations with Hannah until maybe some other interviews can be conducted and council can be informed and review the proposals. And hear and look at those as a whole, because they have been having the contract for the past twenty-six years. It is hard for anybody else to come in. In fact, no one typically bids against her because they know they're not going to win. I feel like massive improvement could be made. I feel like it is average right now. I feel like if you give me six months to a year, we could be running an excellent system. I have business experience, law enforcement experience, and animal experience, and I have volunteered under Cindy for the last five years, hands-on, day-to-day at the shelter. When I asked the panel who interviewed me if they had even been down to the shelter or had any hands-on experience, none of them have. I have. And I have a lot of respect for Cindy and Chris, but there has been talk about, you know, eventually, they're going to retire. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wait three years for that to happen and go through this again. This has been a lot of work, putting this together. And it's not just Amanda Johnson. I opened up an LLC, I'm working with an attorney, I'm working with an accountant on a budget. I'd like to retain a lot of the staff. I feel like the staff needs to be paid more. I'm not doing this for the money, okay? I'm doing this because I'm smart enough to do it, I'm capable to do it. I wanna work with Captain Grove. It's gonna take a little bit to get there, because we have some relationships that are broken. But my overall goal is, I want humane treatment for the animals, I want ongoing training for the staff, I want community enrichment, I want school programs out there for the kids, working with the Alaya Zone Officers. There's so many different things that could be better. We, you go down to the shelter now, there's really no volunteers. In fact, when I was there, it was me and one other girl that was consistent. There, we can save so much money by having more volunteers if we had a more friendly environment down there. That saves money, that saves the city money, that saves everybody money. We could be so much more community. You know, I went around and talked to local veterinarians. I'll be honest with you, none of the veterinarians have a good relationship working with Hannah right now. There's not one. And when I found out from Amber during our meeting that the city actually pays out of a separate account, that the sick and injured animals can be treated through that, that was kinda shocking. I don't know, I just feel like I'd like to have a deferred motion on this for council to review it a little bit further and maybe conduct some deeper interviews.
All right, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Name and address, please.
My name is Becky Webber, and I am, my address is nine five Walnut Street in Mapleton, Iowa. I am the founder and director of Wildlife Central for Iowa, which was formerly known as the Wildlife Lodging Clinic that was founded by Lynn Posey. I'm here to speak on behalf of Amanda. I know her character. She has worked very hard. She's been planning this for many years and working towards getting herself the experience and the knowledge that she needs in order to do what is right for the animals and the animal control. We deal with animal control every season with wildlife rehabilitation. It's not, it's not easy. We have, we have gotten animals from animal control that have been treated inhumanely. I can go into detail, but it's not pretty. We have, Amanda has gotten referrals from the police, the DNR, the public. Just last week, since this process has started with the bidding, we've had an influx of calls with referrals from animal control. Up until that point, we hadn't heard anything, but now that this process has started, now they're cooperating, cooperating a little bit, a little bit more with the public and getting the wildlife the help that they need. We've actually gone out and picked up animals from, wildlife from animal control, and they were dead. uh, and they were dead. The staff didn't even know it. Many times staff don't, they don't even know what's in a box. They get a box from somebody and they shove it in the closet and they give us a call, and we go pick it up. And there's been dead animals. You've been talking about a lot tonight, I've noticed, about, about time, you know, and how something was set up twenty years ago, and here we are still in, still in motion on doing something. Um, animal control, you know, Hannah has been in control of animal control for a long time. Things have gone drastically downhill, and now's the time. It's time for a change. It's time for the betterment. It's time for Sioux City to have a better animal control. It is time for the animals to receive, uh, more humane treatment. And that's basically what we wanted to say. And I really wish you would take more time to consider this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I would first like to thank the city of Sioux City for the opportunity...
Name and address, Cindy, please.
Yes?
Name and address, please.
Cindy Rarrett, R-A-R-R-A-T, 2400 Hawkeye Drive, Sioux City, Iowa. I'd first like to thank the city of Sioux City for the opportunity to provide the animal control services for the past thirty-seven years. Twenty-five as a contractor, but I started in nineteen eighty-five, and I was sitting on the floor with a hundred and sixteen animals in the back, not knowing where they came from, who they were, and what the circumstances were. At the time, I worked for a local veterinarian, and, and the process at that point was, the animals came in, they stayed seven days, euthanasia. Euthanasia rates at that point were ninety-nine percent. So the citizens of Sioux City, which I still hear, they're the evil dog catchers. They're the ones that go out and take your animals. So we've had to overcome that persona. And by doing that, we, we have, um, a, done a comprehensive leadership training program, community service programs, impactful new programs and outreaches, which includes the implementation of a spay and neuter program within the city for the strays that come in. So after seven days, after they stay there seven days, if their owners fail to claim them, then we work with FOTUS Rescue, also Noah's Hope Rescue, to find these animals homes. Our adoption rate is now at ninety-five percent. So it was ninety-nine percent that we euthanized, and it's now at ninety-five percent. I would like to think that's in, in part to all the employees that have worked there, the volunteers and all their hard work and dedication to loving animals and trying to find them and do what's best for them. We've, we've done the spay and neutering before they leave the shelter, so that we can stick with responsible pet ownership and make sure that breeding doesn't continue. Thus far, we have spayed and neutered three thousand one hundred and fifty-six animals without increasing their adoption fees to the public, to reduce the pet over pet population. We employ two veterinarians to provide this service for us. They come twice, twice a month, sometimes three times a month, depending on how many animals we have. We still have a ways to go. We still do have a lot of cats that come in that we need to find homes for, and I'm never gonna get, um, give up that mission to trying to find them loving adoptable homes. We unfortunately have to do put some animals, we do, that have to be euthanized because they're wild or feral. However, now we're able to span, neuter them, and find them loving farm homes, at least where they can live out the rest of their lives. We've, um, drastically reduced the eutheration, the euthanasia rate for the shelter animals by increasing the number of adoptions. We partner with local and state rescue agencies to find our animals loving and adoptable homes. We're instrumental in assisting with local agencies on welfare cases. We assist with the updating of city ordinances.
Need to wrap it up, Cindy.
Pertaining to animals. All right. In summation, I take great pride in leading the animal control operations for this city, to enforce the humane and effective manner while earning the public's trust and presenting a message of responsible pet ownership. I'm especially proud of the fact that our euthanasia rates have decreased and are significantly lower than other agencies within, within this country. Citizens are pleased to visit our new facility to look at, look for their new best friend, and my love for animals is a undying commitment, and I will continue my work in this, in this effort. I encourage the city to consider the success and value of continuing a contract with Hannah Incorporated. It has a proven record of commitment to continuous improvement.
Cindy, you're gonna have to wrap it up. I cut the other person off in three minutes.
Okay. Respectfully, I request that you, um, renew my three-year contract. I would like to stay with you for as long as God is possibly willing to let me, and I appreciate you letting me have it for the past thirty-seven years. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard?
My name's Gary Engel, sixteen twenty-four Summit Street. I started as a volunteer at the old shelter. I've been a volunteer with them for fourteen years. And at the old shelter, we had a German Shepherd, went on to be a canine for the Monroe Police Department. There's been five dogs that left the shelter. Three of them are certified for search and rescue. Ripley went to Nepal, found a fifteen-year-old boy buried alive. Two went to Texas after the tornadoes. Fourth one got certified for narcotics. Fifth one got certified for explosives. And I don't know of any other shelter that has sent animals out of there to help the, the people. If there's ever any problems or anything that I would ever see, which there never has been, with any problems or issues, I would have brought it to their attention, and if it wouldn't get taken care of, I'd be right here letting you know. But it's a great facility, and we have people come back time and time again and bring their dogs in, so I can see them, the, the ones that I've worked with. And I'd like to see that continue to go on. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thanks, Gary. We had a motion on the floor. When's the contract expire? June thirty?
June thirty.
I would, well, I'll wait till the people vote. Passed as three to one. I vote no. And again, I, I don't have any problem with the existing contractor. I know Cindy will walk out of here thinking I do. It's a process around here. If you're gonna disqualify a person for not having the experience necessary, then don't put them through the bidding process. Come up with a process that you vet that first. You guys don't understand, 'cause you get paid every day around here, that it costs money to put a bid together. It costs money to hire an attorney. It costs money to do that stuff that's now wasted. It doesn't make sense to me how we do this. Find out if you're even gonna allow them to bid, and if we can't do that, then the system really, really stinks, because it's just not fair to run this real person, run them through the hoops that we ran them, these guys through, to tell them, well, basically, you're never gonna get the contract 'cause you don't have the experience. It, there has to be a better way to do business. Citizen Concerns, please come to the microphone. State your name and address and what your concern is. Seeing none, Mr. Gretkin.
All right. Excuse me, I just wanted to mention real quickly, uh, a shout-out to the utilities, the labor guys, uh, had a water break in, uh, my neighborhood, and I think they're out late Friday, uh, three o'clock, and might have been a ten, twelve-hour job. I don't know all the challenges they faced, but they hung in there and kept after it, so I really appreciate their efforts. And, and it's not like it's the only one that's happened. I don't know what the total number is for this year. Dave, do you know by chance? No? It's, uh, it's in keeping with what we've seen over the last few years, so I just wanted to let them know I really appreciate it and, and, uh, keep up the good work. That's all I have. Thanks.
Ms. Shane?
Um, I would like to mention that this past weekend was the second annual Local St. Florian Bern Foundation's Gala and Fundraiser. Um, this is something new, uh, that they started last year, and they just weren't sure how it was gonna go, how much money they were gonna earn, and this year their fundraiser, uh, netted them over a hundred thousand dollars after expenses, and that money is gonna put so many kids in camp, and it's gonna go to improve the camp here in Iowa. And I just wanna give a special thought out, shout-out to Derek Trobal and to Christopher Fisher. They're the two young men who have kind of taken this over and said, you know what? We're not getting funds, you know, from other resources that we used to get them from, so we're gonna start something ourselves, and they've been really successful, and I'm really proud of that for them. Thanks so much.
What's that?
Is the citizen concern still open?
He says he has a citizen concern if it's still open. We'll get through council concerns first. I went through citizen concerns, but we'll... All right, come on up and tell us what you got.
So since the bidding process is over, I, I know there's, there's some appeal things available too, but I guess as a citizen of the community, I really would like you guys to hear some of the things that do go on at the animal control facility now.
No, we're not gonna do that. If you have a complaint about that, it's not gonna happen here.
Where would you like me to submit?
I'd like you to take it to the city manager. We're not gonna set up a, a...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I would like to set up that with the city manager, then?
Yep.
And how would I, how would I go about doing that?
He'll walk you out in the hallway and he'll get you a time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Well, we've had a string of birthdays this past week.
A string of them, for sure.
String of them.
And today is your birthday, and I wanna just read, my brother sent me a gift on my birthday last Friday, and don't get excited about this. It's been a tough meeting. It's been a hard meeting. But this is what my brother wrote me. He's my favorite brother, by the way. It dated May seven, twenty twenty-one. He said, and my brother is in the Des Moines area and listens to city council meetings and listens to each of us. So I'll put you, put it in perspective for you, 'cause he has, I think he has a very high compliment of all of us. He said, "Dan, I got tired of waiting for you to run for mayor, so I'm giving this children's book to you now." The moral of the story applies to council members as well. Surround yourself with people who will always tell you what they think and aren't worried about people laughing at their ideas. Dennis. And I think that fits this mayor and our council members. I think we're the most approachable council. I think we listen to what people have to say and what they think, and what, and they don't have to worry about other people. Um, not taking any concerns they have seriously. And I'm gonna extend it. Brother Dennis is probably listening. I'm gonna extend it to our staff as well. You guys have an open mind, guys and gals, you have an open mind. You take all questions seriously. You listen to us up here. I'm sure someone's gonna take the ball and run with it about the process we talked about, or that the mayor talked about, but you carry that out as well. And, and I just, I appreciate it, and that's how city government should work, and that's how we do work.
Right.
I think we're respectful and civil with each other, and I hope that continues. So Dennis, and I won't tell you, I can't tell you the name of the book because, but it's a, it's a children's book, which I'm going to read to my grandkids, but that's the moral of the whole book, the story, is that you listen to questions that are asked and take them seriously. Um, so thank you for that. Happy birthday. I wish you well, my friend, and, uh, many more.
I hope so. Three things. We have a deal from Hi, uh, Randy Heisey. I'd like the city attorney to try to figure that out, 'cause it doesn't appear we're gonna do any better than what we got, so unless you guys have objection.
No.
Unless, unless this lot, unless this lot is one that we can build a, uh, infill house on or something. Amber, you need to put it on the...
I can check the lot size. I do know that the majority of the charges are interest that has accrued since twenty thirteen. I think the original demolition cost was around eighteen thousand. There's been some weed assessments, and the rest is interest.
But you have not pursued that homeowner at all to try to collect it?
Uh, when this went on the property, it was before the city was pursuing a litigation of District Burt to collect for demolition costs, um, so it predated that.
Okay.
At this point, I know there is a request for waiver of the lien. However, it's an assessment that's been spread on the property, so if we waive the lien, the city loses any ability to collect those funds.
Well, why don't you look at it and give us a recommendation?
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe just going as far as demolition costs only to add to that.
Saturday, I got the, I was fortunate enough to once again do the fourth grade history projects at the museum. Probably some of the better ones I've seen over the years. It was really outstanding, and I just wanna give a special thank you to Steve Hanson and his staff, who put an awful lot of hours in that to make it happy, and a lot of happy kids and grandkid, grandparents and parents at that deal, and thankfully, we actually got to do it live this year to hand out awards, so that was good. This week, I, last week, I got to go to Bryant School. Had not been to the new Bryant School. It's really a nice new school, and they have a contest with teachers up there to spin a wheel, and they get points for having somebody come in, and so I, I went for Kathy Vanderloo and spun the wheel for her and took some candy bars for prizes and got a tour of the school. So it was a nice day, and I got a, I got a Bryant Bear's mask, and I'm holiday, so...
Well, thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Oh, I misread it.
What'd you think it said? Chicago Bear?
I saw him change into that. I was wondering.
Bryant Bears? Is that it?
What's back on the Iowa code books? Your cupcake before you leave. Take a box.
There you go.
Yeah, take a box. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Here we go.
Grab a box.